Good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming to the November 7, 2022 Stanley County Commissioners Meeting. I'm making a note, bear with me a real second. Thank you, guys, for coming tonight. I do not, I have nobody sign up for public comment tonight. Raise your hands if you'd like to sign up for public comment tonight. Wonderful, okay. It won't be a long agenda this evening. I'd like to begin this with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance from Commissioner Scott Eathorne.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We celebrate Veterans Day this coming Friday, and I want to thank all our veterans out there who served this country and who fought for freedoms. Tomorrow's a big freedom that we shouldn't take for granted as far as voting. But again, I'd like to remember all the veterans out there and especially the ones that are serving now. As bad as this country is sometimes, it's still pretty darn good. But it's due to the ones that have served this country. So again, if y'all would join me in prayer. My great heavenly Father, we again, Lord, thank you for this day, and just thank you for the privilege and the honor, Lord, that we can just come and gather and do the business of Stanley County. Lord, we pray for those in our community that are sick. Lord, we pray for those who are fighting illnesses in the hospitals. Lord, just be with them, lift them up, preach them, Lord, in a way that only you can. We pray for our police, our fire, EMS that protect and service daily. Continue to be with them, and, Lord, we pray a special blessing for our militaries and their families, Lord, across this world. Lord, just be with them, Lord, as we're coming up on the holiday season, Lord, it is tough being away from home. We pray, Lord, you just be with them, lift them up. We pray for, you'll just be with us in general for the things that we do, just give honor and glory to your name. These things we're asking, your precious name, we pray. Amen. Go with Stan and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for that, Commissioner Eathorne. Before we get to the agenda tonight, Commissioner LaHawn could not be with us this evening. He has another thing he needs to attend. I'd like a motion to excuse Commissioner LaHawn from tonight's proceedings. Motion from Commissioner, or, second from Commissioner Almond, all in favor, aye? Any opposed? What did I say? I told you, your low-key outfit threw me off tonight, sir. Second by Commissioner Ashudo, Mr. Tyler. All in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. You Commissioners have the agenda in front of you. We will all have a chance to review it. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner. Second. By Commissioner Ashudo. Y'all just trying to screw with me now. All in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Almond, by the other way, is with us tonight. He has had to call in, so we've got to cut him on the phone. Commissioner Almond, can you hear us right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Public comment done there. We're going to jump right into our next agenda item, Stanley County Schools. This is a presentation by Dr. Dennis. And thank all of you guys that came tonight to support these presentations. I see some school board members, some people here for the land use stuff. Thank you, guys, for taking time to show up and show support.
Good afternoon, Chairman Jordan, members of the board. I'm sorry I'm a little raspy tonight, so if I need to repeat anything, please let me know. So the Public Schools of North Carolina has a division with public safety, and every year we can apply for, among other things, safety equipment and especially resources to help fund school resource officers. And usually this funding, it changes from time to time, but it consistently stay around the $36,000 to $33,000 range. This year it's $36,666 for additional resource officers. We have applied for these in the past, but now we're wanting to expand the program, especially resource officers in some of our elementary schools and elementary schools that are in parts of the county that are more rural and further away from other resources. The purpose for resource officers, not just this knee-jerk reaction to active shooter incidents that happen, but resource officers build relationships with the community. They're visible in our schools. Just two weeks ago, in Millenport, someone come right off a 73, 12 o'clock in the middle of the day, and busted out teachers' windows, staff members' windows, installed on two different occasions within, what would you say, about 15, 20 minutes each other? And there's also mad parents, community issues that come to our school. And we're, you know, we've seen improved school climate with the schools that have SROs, especially effective SROs, and they're proven to reduce crime in schools. So what I have today and what the county manager was nice enough to put together, some of these are some preliminary figures that we come up with with what would cost for five new SROs if they started in January. And I know the first numbers are, that's the total investment as far as cars and stuff like that. It may seem high, but those cars will rotate out through the sheriff's stock eventually. They'll have to be replaced, so that in itself will pay for itself. And, you know, you see the differences there, but I'm going to let Ms. Flo talk a little bit about the actual loans and grants themselves, excuse me.
Thank you for having us this evening. The actual grant that we applied for, we actually received $403,326, which will fund 11 positions in Stanley County. We currently have positions at Locust and Norwood. Stanfield is actively hiring. They think they have a perspective as of today, and Oakboro is hiring as well. Albemarle Police Department has committed to hiring an additional officer in January. We currently share an SRO between East and Central at this time, but at that point, we will have positions in those elementary schools. So that leaves us with five elementary schools in the county that we would love to be able to put an SRO in, and that is Richfield, Millenport, Aquadale, Indy, and Baden. And these are all schools that are kind of in those rural areas outside of municipalities. So that is what we are looking for, the additional funding for. The grant that we did receive is $36,666 per officer per year. There will be a little bit of a prorating with that, because if we hire in the middle of, like, January, the middle of the year, but I can let Terry Dudney explain a little bit more about that and how that may change. But that's kind of what we're looking at doing, is funding these other five positions in these elementary schools. Thank you.
Just to give you a little, this grant, we've received it for two years. So in the past, we've had to re-apply for it every year. So this year, the DPI and the State Office of Safety Department has allowed it to be a renewable item for up to two years. As Jennifer said earlier, we found out today that with a communication that we had with the State Office is that we would have to look at the proration figure of the $36,666 that would be given to the municipalities based on the amount of time that the SRO would be placed into the schools. So that, as well as the possible match, would actually be prorated as well. So there is a match on these positions as well.
Anything else, Chair, for you to like to say?
You know, just, you know, with our elementary schools, us wanting to expand, a lot of it has to do with the elementary schools being extremely soft targets for a lot of different things based on their population. So we appreciate you listening. If you have any questions, if you don't, I know you're probably going to table it, that you can reach out to me or my staff at any time.
We had talked about tabling tonight. We probably had that motion, not for any bad reason, but just so we can have all of our fellow Commissioners here and...
Well, I understand.
But I'll give the Commissioners a chance to pose some questions to you while we are all here. Y'all are here, too. One of the ones I have, you mentioned that it would be prorated, which makes total sense. I think in calendar years most of the time, because that's how my business runs, but it's a two-year grant. So would it be, would we get the grant for a year and a half fiscal, or would it, I mean, is that how?
Yeah, so essentially, yeah. And I don't know why they do this DPI, but you never get this information till October. So, but if you already have people hired, of course, it kicks in, you know, and it'll pay for that entire year. But if you're trying to expand and you need to hire people, because the sheriff or any police agency is not going to hire someone until everything's, you know, of course guaranteed. But, yeah, it would essentially, if that's what you're asking. Some of the funds, the funds not covering, as far as we already have, excuse me, like the ones that are in place at Locust, the other ones will be hired on. That would be, yeah, I guess, a year and a half, you could look at it that way. Yeah, it goes by fiscal year. It won't run into another fiscal year.
Or you would have them from January to June of this year, and then one more year?
Exactly. Yes, sir.
Fellow Commissioners, do y'all have any questions for the school board?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think it's a good thing, but I think I need to look at it more. One thing I want to express concern about was we met with the full board back in the spring, I think, of 2021, and after that, us Commissioners put together a committee of three people. Because I feel we need to be partners with you guys instead of just every time you come up here for money, you give us a 10-minute presentation and stuff. And we had, we put together a facilities committee. I know all night, two summers ago, I was told that we reached out to y'all to get a meeting together, and that never came through. And then we reached out again, and there was a meeting set up to meet with you guys, I believe it was sometime in September. Then, two days before the meeting, y'all canceled the meeting. And I'm tired of just throwing money. And the one time we did meet was when you guys needed emergency meeting to fund a grant where it was just a limited thing that we talked about. Y'all are struggling for money. I mean, let's be honest with you. And we have older buildings. And if I will always said, like, eight years ago, that if we're not going to close buildings, we need to fix the buildings, and we need to fix the buildings right. And you need to have a tough discussions on that. And we need to sit down and start talking about it and working together. You know, I think about the eight years that have been wasted, literally doing not much of anything, and we still have the same Band-Aids that we put on. Problems. And like, just an example, and I don't think advocate, say we did have to close a school, and should have closed a school or two. That means over the last eight years, we've been paying for stuff at a school that should have been perhaps closed or perhaps been in a plan to be rebuilt. So I just think we need to really sit down and get regular meetings and be serious about it. And just getting a working committees to do this, just to help you guys and so we could understand better what your issues are rather than just coming, you know, when you need money and having a 10-minute presentation.
Yeah, I can't speak for the board, but I'd be glad to meet anytime or answer any questions you guys would have.
Thank you, Dr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion that we postpone this meeting to, this to our next meeting in November for further information.
We have a motion from Commissioner Barbie to table this to November 21st. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ashudo. Any further discussion?
When is the deadline for where you guys have to apply for this or have an answer? Is there a deadline date?
What's applied for?
Oh, you're talking about as far as when we have to tell the state, this is the ones we fill. Is there a deadline?
The grant has already been received, so we have it. So when the positions are filled, then we'll just prorate it from there for this year, and then it will just be a reoccurring.
Do we have to turn in MOU or anything?
I have to have the MOU turned in.
That's what I thought.
In order for it to actually come through.
Yeah, so, but there's not a hard deadline. That's a good question.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. We will pick this up on our November 21st meeting.
All right, we greatly thank you and hope you have a great night.
If y'all have any questions in the meantime, feel free to call us.
Yeah, call us as well. Thank you so much.
Next item on this evening's agenda, department presentation from Chris Moon, building inspections. Are you going to make this interesting? Their song and dance routine comes along with this one?
See, and I take the bullseye off my back because there's so many people behind me. Thank you, Commissioners and staff, for the invitation to present the inspection department to you this evening. The purpose of building codes enforcement is to establish the minimum requirements to safeguard a public health, safety, and general welfare through strength, means of egress facility, stability, sanitation, adequate light and ventilation, energy conservation, conservation, and safety to life and property from fire and hazards pertaining to the building environment. To provide safety to firefighters and emergency responders during emergency operations and to enforce minimum standards, provisions, and requirements for safe and stable design. To inspect methods of construction and use of materials in buildings or structures and to enforce North Carolina Building Codes, review plans, require permits, and perform inspections. So that's from the state what we're supposed to do, so I thought I'd let you know that. Today has been five years to the date that I was hired as the Director of Inspections, and some days it's hard to believe I've been here, it went by so quick, and some days it seems like I've been here 20 years. But I do love my job, and we have currently six inspectors that are employed in inspection department, including myself. Out of those six, three of them are commercial and residential inspectors, and three of them are just residential inspectors. To become an inspector, you had to have a standard license from the Department of Insurance. Those go in levels of one, two, and three. Level one is your residential housing, which we have mostly around here. Level three, you can inspect anything from Maguire Nuclear Plant to Panther Stadium. It's unlimited. So you had to have those standard certificates in each trade. So we do four trades, building, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing, so you count them up. That's 12 certificates that you had to go to school for and learning and to get field experience in doing it. Just to give you a ballpark, if you want to attain level threes in all four trades, it's about a five-year process at best. So it takes a while to train inspectors. So right now, we have two inspectors with all level threes, one being myself and one being Allen Dennis, Chief Commercial and Plan Reviewer. We have one inspector with all level twos and with a couple of level threes. He's fixing to get probably all level threes by the end of the year or next, and that's Justin Borgemeister. We have two inspectors with level ones and some level twos. That's Jason Whitley and Rusty Kerr. And our new inspector, Jordan Kroger, she has a probationary level one inspections, and she's doing a fine job. So she's learning on the job. As with anything in this day and time, there's nobody wants to work, and there is a shortage of everything. There is a shortage of inspectors as well, especially your level-three inspectors. Most of them are retiring, and there's a gap behind that. That's a big, wide gap. So a lot of counties are struggling. Chatham County has struggled. I think they didn't have an inspector for four months. Montgomery County is going through it right now. They don't have any inspectors. So our county is very blessed to have the number of inspectors we have and the job that they do, and they do a great job. Just to give you an example of some of the codes we enforce, we enforce the Residential Building Code, the Commercial Building Code, National Electric Code, Mechanical Code, the Plumbing Code, the Gas Code, the ANSI Code for Accessibility, those with disabilities, the Manufacturer Code, which is your mobile homes, your manufactured homes, Administrative Code for your policies and procedures, Timber Frame Code, which is your log cabins and log houses, Swimming Pool and Spa Code, Energy Code, Existing Building Code, and standards and listings such as NFPA and UL listings. So that's just a brief summary of some of the codes. And so it takes a lot of knowledge to know what you got to do, but not as much as learning it, but know where to find it and know how to research it and everything. The types of inspections we do for residential is basically what you think about. Your footings from your foundations to your framing, to your decks and your porches, to all your roofs, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, and then your finals. Commercial inspections are much, just like residential, with some extras. We look at life safety. We look at your exits, your egress path. We determine if a building, it has to be sprinkled or not. We look at your occupant load, how many people can be in a building at a certain time. Look at your accessibility to that building. People with disabilities, make sure they can get in and out safely. Parking, we look at signs, cell towers. We do walkthroughs for existing buildings as well. That's where, say, an old building in town or in the county has had retail for years and years and years, and next thing you know, they want to be a restaurant. We just can't just switch it over real quick. So you have to do a planning, do a session. We do a walkthrough permit for that, and we, you know, guide them through that process. We do ABC inspections for alcohol beverage control. We do daycare and group home inspections for North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. So many inspections that we do, many things that we have on our tool belt that we have to get done. We also set the policy to issue, deny, and revoke permits. We issue Certificate of Occupancies, temporary Certificate of Occupancies, Certificate of Completions. So we work hand in hand with central permitting. More or less, we set the policies. They handle all the data work and putting it in. Our current status of the inspection department, we have a couple of major projects going on in the commercial, of course, Charlotte Pipe and Foundry. We decided when that job first come about that it was best to leave an inspector on site, you know, while they're there. So we had one inspector, Allen Dennis, that stayed out there until about a month ago, every day, and that has worked out great. They're to the point now where they can call in their inspections normally, but for that size of a project, it was just going to be hard to do. It's more or less, it's like a security monitor that went round and around. They flagged them down as they need them. So, but they are ahead of schedule far as the construction side. In fact, their office and bathhouse was supposed to be started in April. It's done and completed. It's just waiting on, I think, Oakboro for water and sewer. So that's way ahead of schedule, and it looks like fall of '23, what they're projecting, should be close, somewhere about there. American Racing Hitters is starting their new project out in Locust and Stanfield area, where they build racing headers for NASCAR and stuff. They're coming in, and they're starting that project as well. Fiber Run's another big one, probably just as big as Charlotte Pipe, many permits. With their three buildings, enormous amount of permits, expansion, upgrading. So they're doing a lot of that way. Far as residential projects, of course, we got our speculative, you know, housing. We got Morgan Hills. We got crossroads. Got some housing developments out towards Millenport area. So, you know, there's quite a bit going on. Just to give you a little perspective of where we're at, I done some figuring and took some, looked at some reports, and last year, fiscal year, we averaged 439 permits per month. This quarter, this first quarter alone, just four months, we're averaging 528 permits, almost 100 more permits. Inspections we performed per month last fiscal year was 1,250 approximately per month. This quarter alone, we're doing 2,227 inspections per month. It's 1,000 more. Inspections per day for last fiscal year was around 70. This year, the inspections per day is around 115 per day. So we're pretty busy. We're fully staffed, though. We're thankful for that, what the board has gave us and what we have to work with, and we hope to retain what we have. That is the problem that most departments and inspection departments has, is because there's a great need for inspectors. So you can entice them to go to other counties or whatever. So, you know, our main purpose is to train them and keep them here. A good inspector is worth its weight in gold if you're on the private side, and I was for 28 years. A bad inspector can make your life miserable. So been on both sides of it, and there are, there are other counties out there that are struggling. And so be thankful for what you have, really, and I am. We do have a great staff and about all I have. So any questions?
I've got a few, and then I'll pass it around to the board. First, thank you for taking the time, Chris, to come up and talk to us. As far as new inspectors, is there a college degree requirement to get started in the field, or is it more trained on the job?
More trained on the job. Actually, if you're, it's a great opportunity for out of high school and if you're in the construction field or knowledge, because you come straight out, we pay your way to the schools. We're getting you there, your books, your tuitions, everything. You just pay for all of your education and training on the job as you go.
That answered my next question. So if you hire an inspector who wants to get his level ones and all four things, but then you entice him by providing the education for him to get level two and three?
Exactly, exactly. And to get level twos and threes, usually, I'll put it this way, most of the time, if you come in and never been an inspector before and you get a level three, you're an engineer. You've already had experience and stuff like that, and they'll give you those level threes. I came in as a general contractor with a college education, and they still kept me at one. So, you know, it's took a while to get it. They don't mean the knowledge, the knowledge that you have, but it's the more the experience in the inspecting field. So it's a little bit different. It's something that's not transferable far as to the private side. So if I decide I don't want to be inspector anymore, I cannot inspect for the private side. This is only for state. So I can go to the other municipalities and other jurisdictions and be an inspector and transfer those licenses over. So you can see where the kind of the competition begins, you know, where you got the bigger counties that can offer more money. But it's also when times get slow, you're the first ones to go when you do that. So a good work environment helps keep them here and, you know, take care of them. I mean, my guys, we, I stand behind them. They usually, what my policy is, they go out and inspect. They have problems, that comes to me. I handle the problems. Y'all do y'all's job and inspect. So it works out pretty good.
And like in our world in the IT space, if you were to come work for me or I were to go work for someone, maybe I want to get my CCNA, my CCNP certificate, I would do something like, my employer would ask me to serve two years. You know, I'll pay for this education. You have to give back the company for X amount of years. Does your department work like that?
Well, when you come in and you're on, like, Ms. Kroger is a new employee, I'll just use that for example. She come in, she probated out in one in all four fields, okay? So she has six months of training before she can start applying for tests or certificates. And she has three years to obtain those. So those four certificates in those field. So there's not really nothing set up once you get your ones to keep them here, unfortunately. But until you get those ones, there's no way they can go somewhere else and work, let me put it that way. So you're more or less guaranteed more or less two to three years of employment with them. But then after that, then, you know, it could change.
You have to have a really good coffee machine to keep them at that point.
Yeah, yeah.
Fellow Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, Chris, you know, I've worked with you a lot. I appreciate all that you and your staff do, and it's very helpful. And some of the things that people don't understand, when we have a pre-construction meeting with the commercial side, it's good to get, you know, AD out there to, you know, tell the contractors what we can do and what we can't do. So I certainly appreciate you, and I know he's been tied up there at the Pipe Foundry, but just thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
I'd say one of your tough jobs is the minimum, making sure people have the minimum thing. You guys work with evictions and stuff like that.
Well, actually, we don't work with that. That's more, minimal housing is zoning.
So zoning does that?
Yeah, zoning does, far as the conditions, the living conditions and stuff. We deal more with, once we approve a structure is livable, then more or less we're out. Then we make sure you meet the minimal standards. Just like I tell anybody, they say, well, it's built to code, and I said, congratulations, you got a D minus, because the minimum is D minus. So, you know, there are other ways, you know, we also, probably our most important job is working with the city, other cities, and their fire marshal and their zoning as well. Because we do these walkthroughs, we have to get approval from zoning, as Scott says, you know, from Locust. We also get approval from the fire marshal as well and then from Meyer Department. Now, the fire marshal code and the fire code is all under our code, but they have a separate entity in it as well. So, but a lot of things come back down on us for the final decision, except for zoning issues. So, yeah, it becomes tough, but you have to learn to know what you're dealing with. It's not, the code is a general broad consistency thing of what needs to be done, but it can be applied in different ways for different situations. So you got to know how to apply the code.
For those of you who are watching this, who may one day need to have to deal with a building inspector, the nicer you are to him, the better chance it's going to pass. We, I do love all their, so we're, you know, we did do a lot of job sites, and there's a running rule that if you're not management or supervisor above and you see a building inspector, you just hush and leave. Don't speak, don't talk to them, don't interrupt them, don't make their day difficult. You let that man have or woman have everything they need to get in and out quickly and quietly as possible without the headache.
We don't want to be avoided. We want you to come. We want to be open. And so, I mean, there's always questions, and trust me, I try to take the code to find and get what you want, not to fail you.
We have built a building ourselves, my wife's building, that you guys, and I have seen both sides of Stanley County's permitting and inspections, the way it used to be and the way it is now. And I was, I was not happy. I failed my first inspection, by the way. But I do admit, it was all for fire safety. I mean, it's pretty much, I'm not sure why they called it building inspection. It's basically fireman, volunteer fireman inspection is what it is. But you guys, you've come to where you're easier to work with, you are informative, you share knowledge, you tell us how to get there. So from the perspective of a person that has had to be on the other side of your conversations, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I appreciate what you guys do and how far you've come, since it's the way it used to be.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Anything else, Professor Boyler, Mr. Crisco?
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks, guys. Next item on the agenda, land use plan. This is going to be Ms. Michelle Nance. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
Ms. Reagan, you're not going to join us too? You were so enthusiastic during that, that planning.
So thank you, commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to talk about the land use plan. Um, I'll wait till she kind of gets that up, but, um, thank you Bailey. Appreciate that. So thank you again. Um, it's a pleasure to be here this evening and, uh, we're really here to provide you just an overview of 10 months of work that the Stanley County residents, property owners and business owners have done, uh, to create the 2040 Stanley County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And so tonight we're going to acknowledge the participants that really got us to this point. We'll do a quick overview of the planning process and how we collected data from, um, all the community and what we heard. We'll review the future land use map and give a flavor to some of the land use recommendations that are included in the plan. And then we're going to hear from several of the steering committee members about their observations of the process. And ultimately this evening, we're going to ask, even though we might not receive, but we will ask, um, that you consider the planning board's unanimous recommendation to adopt the comprehensive plan. So first I want to start out by recognizing the talent and energy that was on our steering committee. They had a huge job. They, this group represented a cross-section of the community, as you can see here. They did the work of guiding the plan development from start to finish, including advertising all the public engagement, uh, that we had, developing the plan vision, the guiding principles, and then wading through the engagement results to identify areas of consensus. And you'll see a lot of familiar names here. Um, these folks really deserve a big kudo for all the time and effort they put in. We also had a group of committee advisors and not only did they attend our steering committee members, but we were also able to do some in-depth interviews with these folks. You'll, you'll recognize from the names that they have some very unique sets of experience and expertise, uh, here in the county. And we wanted to make sure that we tapped into that expertise and understood, uh, what was going on in their area of focus. And of course, your planning staff, Bob and Bailey have been tremendous through this entire process, giving us feedback, guidance and pointing us to resources. And finally, wanted to thank the planning board and the board of commissioners for taking a real proactive approach to planning for the future and understanding that the needs of Stanley County now are likely to change over the next two decades. So a little bit about, um, plan development. Our role as, um, I, I should say, I'm Michelle Nance. I'm with Central Atlanta Regional Planning and, um, we were asked to come in and, and help with the development of the plan. And really our role was just to facilitate the process, to be here, to listen to what the Stanley County residents wanted for their future, to anticipate the growth, uh, that is coming. And we did that by, in a few ways. We looked at what are the existing conditions now, what were the current and planned infrastructure, uh, investments that were, that you were looking for in the future. We also looked at other growth drivers in the county and then developed an action plan, uh, to help the county grow and prosper while protecting the rural character and culture that you've grown to love. So this is just an outline of the land use plan timeline. We started back in February of this year and this just shows you in a nutshell, kind of what we've been doing, uh, throughout the year. Uh, and you can see, uh, how the steering committee took part in this, the public engagement and so forth. And so here we are tonight. Uh, but just a little bit about the engagement. Um, several of you were at some of the open houses and of course our steering committee was as well, but we did six of those, um, out in the communities, uh, April, during the months of April, May and October, um, had a lot of attendees and you'll see later, when I mentioned stickers on the map, you may think, well, what in the world is that? Were y'all playing with Play-Doh too? Um, but we had some, uh, really good inputs by those stickers on the maps and it really informed what the land use plan looks like and what that map looks like. Uh, thank you to, uh, for putting out the, the survey on your social media and talking about that to your constituents because we got fantastic responses from the survey and those responses really, uh, helped us develop, uh, the, the entire plan. We did leadership lunches, uh, out in the communities, uh, talking to elected leaders and staff. And then of course, we've talked about what our steering committee did. Now although this photo here is from Baden, um, we went around to all the municipalities too and just to understand what was going on in their areas of the county. Obviously this plan is for the county, but we wanted to understand what was going on in the municipalities because as their growth, uh, expands at the edges of their borders, that obviously impacts the county. And so we wanted to understand what was happening there. And we had a really good time doing some ride arounds. Uh, the mayor of, uh, Baden actually took us out in our car and just showed us all the cool things that were happening. And so, uh, those were really informative. Um, we also did ride arounds to look at, um, industry, the parks, uh, downtowns and just really what was happening, um, in the communities and just, I will, I will have to say, I've never seen such gorgeous parks, uh, anywhere. Uh, Stanley County should be, and I know you aren't very proud of, of that. And so these are just a, a few pictures of, of us going around, looking at some of the interesting and cool things in the county. And of course, the community engagement is where we worked with, um, folks in all corners of the county and to really understand what they treasured about Stanley County, maybe what some of their concerns were for the future and documented that so that we could make sure that we had that in the plan. So I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Reagan Murphy to talk a little bit more about, when, once we got this input, what did we do with it? And how did that create the plan that you'll see in front of you tonight? Reagan?
Thanks, Michelle, and thanks to all of you once again for, uh, as Michelle said, being proactive about Stanley County's future. Um, and another just big acknowledgement to the county, um, to Andy and Bob and Bailey and also to our entire steering committee for all of their work to bring this plan to life, um, based on all of the community input that we heard. You heard Michelle mention 685 stickers on maps, um, and you might've seen a couple of slides ago. And some of these images, um, we actually printed out maps of the county and brought them to each of the open houses as some of our engagement. And we allowed folks to put stickers on those maps to indicate the types of development they wanted to see across the county, um, whether that be agricultural, uh, land and preserved open space, um, different types of densities of residential development, commercial industry and other types of, uh, land uses. And the first thing we did when we, you know, collected all of our community input is we actually consolidated all five of those maps into a single map. So I'll talk a little bit more, um, about how we incorporated that into our planning process. Uh, but we got almost 700 stickers, um, so a really complete picture of, of what folks wanted to see across the county. And big takeaways, um, from that mapping activity is we heard that folks wanted to see growth, especially higher density growth, really concentrated around and in the municipalities. Um, they wanted to see agriculture and open space preserved in the county. We also heard that folks specifically wanted to see rural vistas preserved along major corridors. So as Michelle mentioned, we also got almost 1,320, uh, responses to our community survey. That's about 2% of the county's total population, which 2% seems small, but when you think about surveying a community this size, that's really, really a significant turnout and response rate. Um, so we asked folks a lot of different questions about what they enjoy about Stanley County now, what they're concerned about and where they want to see the county go in the future. Um, when we asked folks to identify, you know, what defines Stanley County for you, of course farming and agriculture and the natural environment came back as the top responses. Um, really that rural character is what defines Stanley County for a lot of folks, along with that sense of community, right? That tight knit community environment, um, that has become so rare, but is still so relevant and so accessible in Stanley County. Um, and location in the region was another big one. Folks enjoy the fact that places like Concord or Charlotte are accessible from Stanley County, an easy drive, uh, but that they can come back and have, you know, a sprawling hillside or, you know, a sprawling farm right off their back porch and have that vista, um, to come home to. When we asked folks how they want to be able to describe Stanley County 20 years from now, you know, projecting out to 2040, um, really what folks said was they want to see those, uh, elements of Stanley County's rural character preserved, right? They want to see Stanley County remain a great place to live, work and raise a family. Now here's where it starts to get interesting. So when we asked folks, where do you want to see future growth and development in Stanley County? Only 7% of our respondents said they wanted to see most or all growth in the county's jurisdiction. Um, 93% of our respondents to the survey said they either wanted a mix of growth in the county and in the municipalities, or about two thirds of our respondents said they wanted most or all growth focused in the municipalities. So echoing what we saw in that mapping activity. Um, and then we broke that down even further. We asked folks to talk about, you know, the types of development they wanted to see and where in the counties. You'll see, um, on the left-hand side, the blue responses are folks saying they want to see that in Stanley County, so in the county's jurisdiction. Um, and then the green color on the right-hand side, those are the folks that wanted to see those types of development in the municipalities. And overwhelmingly we heard that folks wanted to see almost all types of development, more so in the municipalities. Um, there were a couple significant exceptions to that. We heard that parks and recreation, single-family residential, um, which was the lowest density of residential that we offered folks to choose from, manufacturing and industry, uh, community services like healthcare, um, those were all more balanced. Folks wanted to see some of those things accessible in the county's jurisdiction as well. Um, and agriculture specifically was really concentrated, um, in the county's jurisdiction. Then we asked folks, you know, of those 14 types of development that we showed on the last slide, which should folks, uh, what should Stanley County prioritize? Um, so these were the top five responses. We heard, you know, agriculture and farming unsurprisingly contributing to that rural character. We also heard healthy living, you know, parks and recreation. Uh, Michelle mentioned y'all have some truly beautiful, um, parks and other, uh, recreation facilities in the county, um, and folks really love that and want to see more of that. Uh, full-service restaurants, which we took to mean, you know, small businesses, local commercial development. Um, and then medical facilities and senior living actually rose to the top as well. Um, so that was a significant finding. We wanted to lift up for y'all as well and, and it's something we talk about in the plans recommendations too. We also asked folks to think about the types of businesses and industry that would be most important for Stanley County's future. Um, so we had folks rank these eight options, um, from one to eight. So we averaged out the rankings that folks provided and you can see once again agriculture and forestry tops out at around 2.3. So that had the highest average ranking, um, in our results. Healthcare and manufacturing were right after that at the top of the list. Um, we saw tourism. Of course, other took the bottom and then tourism was, uh, the next lowest. Um, some folks really do want to share Stanley County and share the, the wealth of natural beauty and resources y'all have here, but others really wanted to keep it kind of a hidden gem, um, is what we heard. So what does all this mean? Really, um, I think a key takeaway and one that we were really excited about, um, is Stanley County, county residents know their communities very well and care very deeply. Folks are very passionate. This is probably not surprising to y'all as the board of commissioners. Um, you probably hear that passion pretty frequently. Um, but it's, you know, something really significant. At Central Atlanta, we work in a lot of different communities throughout the region. Um, and this is something that really sets Stanley County apart, um, is that kind of shared vision that folks truly do have for the county and what's important, um, to prioritize as, uh, the county moves forward. Um, and so noting that, we actually did see, you know, some clear consensus about what's important as Stanley County grows for the next 20 years. Um, folks really want to see strategic and intentional growth that accounts for infrastructure. They don't want to see growth that's leapfrogging the development of things like water and sewer and transportation capacity. Um, they want to make sure the infrastructure comes first. A lot of folks, like I mentioned, also acknowledge agriculture and manufacturing and also healthcare as key industries that are, that are going to be very important to the county's future success. Um, and a lot of folks that we heard from see uncontrolled residential growth as a major risk to the rural character in the open space and agriculture that makes Stanley County what it is and give it, um, its really unique and special character, uh, in the broader region. Um, and we also saw some specific priorities come out, right? Agriculture, I won't keep beating a dead horse, but we heard some specific things about the agricultural economy, agritourism, promoting small agricultural businesses and protecting small farmers, um, as well as family farms that have been, uh, you know, in Stanley County for, uh, decades, if not centuries, um, as really important to respondents. Uh, we heard that infrastructure, being able to support future growth was a huge priority. Um, we heard that folks wanted to see the local economy build a pathway to opportunity for, you know, kids who grow up here, who attend Stanley County schools, um, and want to stay here, um, and for folks who move into the county to take advantage of the wonderful opportunities it provides to build and raise a family. Um, we also heard, and you know, we've heard some of this tonight even, um, about the importance of coordination between the county and municipalities, different departments and boards within the county. Coordination emerged and collaboration is a really strong theme, um, and a priority for moving forward effectively and being able to accomplish that strategic planning and strategic growth that's so important. Um, and of course concentrating more of the growth and more of the high density development around the municipalities was really important as well. So with the help of our steering committee and based on all of the inputs we received, we developed a vision statement for the plan and I'm, I'll read it. Um, Stanley County is a thriving community where our residents enjoy a rural lifestyle alongside access to the best opportunities, amenities and resources North Carolina has to offer. We provide a high quality of life to current and future generations by maintaining a flourishing local economy, protecting our rural character and natural resources and promoting focused and sustainable growth. Um, and this vision is incredibly important because it really informed the development of the plan policy areas and then the recommendations from there. We really tried to tie all of it back to this. Um, so I mentioned key policy areas. These really emerged from the survey as well as the feedback that we got from our steering committee. You know, when we were reading through open-ended comments from the surveys, these were the themes that really emerged as key issues, um, that cut across a lot of different topic areas. Um, so we actually concentrated all of our recommendation, excuse me, recommendations into these six buckets, um, with the help of the steering committee as well. So I'm going to talk now a little bit about the future land use maps. These were also developed, uh, with help from the steering committee and, you know, with guidance from the mapping activity we did and from, um, you know, some of the interviews, some of the one-on-one conversations we had with our advisors, uh, to learn more about the plans for growth and development in the county in the next 20 years. Um, and we developed a methodology that I think folks are, uh, who have been involved with the plan are really proud of to identify areas for growth and areas for preservation moving forward. Um, so I'm going to walk you through the, the process that we went through. So we started with existing land use in the county, um, taken from tax assessor data, and this represents what's currently on the ground today. Uh, we also looked at current county zoning to get a sense of what's planned, you know, for more of the short-term future, um, what we might expect to see parcels turn to, um, you know, if they're at one use today, that zoning might, you know, facilitate a, a transition in the more near future. Um, but so this is existing land use and this is where we started. Then we started to look, you know, we heard that preservation, especially of agriculture and rural land was a really important, um, priority for the steering committee and for folks across the county. Um, and it makes sense because prime farmland actually comprises about 40% of Stanley County's total land area, um, the soils that, that make up prime farmland, um, which is really rare. That's a, that's a very high percentage. Um, what's that?
It's 40%.
It's 40%. Yeah. So 40% of Stanley County's land area is prime farmland. Um, and that's in high demand for development. It's in high demand for, you know, open space and agricultural operations, but it's also land that usually bodes well for development, especially residential development. Um, and so we really needed to be strategic about preserving those areas of prime farmland that haven't been developed to this point. Um, so this map shows prime farmland and it also shows areas that are protected whether by, you know, a voluntary agricultural district or the Three Rivers Land Trust, um, other protected areas. So we looked at where land was already being preserved. Then we looked at supportive infrastructure because that was the other key priority, right? Was we wanted to see development follow infrastructure. So we looked at where transportation infrastructure, current So we looked at where transportation infrastructure currently exists, whether that be for vehicles or for rail, for things like freight and goods movement. We also looked at sewer and water lines, right, where they exist today, and we also factored in, thanks to Dwayne Wingo, who met with us about capital improvement plans for water and sewer over the next five, 10, and 20 years, and we incorporated improvement plans into our considerations for how we moved forward. And based on all of that, we created future land use designation areas. So we created four areas, one of those being an airport compatibility area, but the other three are really the key takeaways, and I'll cover a little bit about each of them. So rural preservation, that's really comprises most of the county, right? And it's characterized by lower-density development, by agriculture, open space, and large lot residential where there is residential development. The plan does recommend a minimum lot size of five acres per dwelling unit in those areas, which is a difference from the current zoning in those areas, to ensure that the landscape and that rural character is not sacrificed, and smaller lots don't put environment and health at risk due to a lack of supportive infrastructure. Major subdivisions are generally discouraged in the, or are proposed to be generally discouraged in these areas, but there are recommended standards for conservation subdivisions as part of the plan recommendations that can allow for additional density if significant portions of the project areas are permanently preserved for agriculture, open space, recreation, and those sorts of things to preserve the character of the land. The second, secondary growth area is more of a transitional area, which allows for slightly higher development densities. So these are areas where infrastructure might not be available yet, but it's anticipated to be planned or connections are close by. And mostly, we're recommending, you know, for residential development, single-family residential with a recommended minimum lot size that aligns with R-20 guidance right now, or 15,000 square feet. And this also accounts for concentrations of some industrial and commercial development as well. We worked with Candace Lauter to identify specific areas where industry growth is anticipated based on current zoning, based on economic development plans, to make sure those were accounted for in some growth areas as well. And then finally, we've got primary growth areas. These are the red areas on the map, and you'll notice those are closest into the municipalities. So really able to access, you know, that concentration of supportive infrastructure and community services that really allow folks to get at a variety of amenities within a short distance. Those are designated for the highest densities of development, so that can include single-family residential, but also multifamily residential, like senior living communities and town homes and those sorts of things, and mixed-use centers as well. We wanted to encourage, you know, walkable development and walkable town centers and communities. And the recommended minimum lot size for that category is up to 3,500 square feet, which is R-8 for single-family residential. So that's recommended for that area. So the next map, these are the community types, and this is really meant to be just a broad sketch. It's at the parcel level, so it kind of takes the existing land use for each of these parcels and projects out what it might be based on these designation areas, these broader overlays, if you will. So basically, the most important takeaway here is that residential development is really the thing that changes the most between those three designation areas. So in the rural preservation area, you see mostly what's called rural living, which is that lightest green, and that comprises most of the map. You also see working farms and a lot of open space. When you move into the secondary growth areas, you see single-family neighborhoods, which again are that similar kind of character of development, but at a higher density. And then when you get into the primary growth areas, that's when you start to allow for both single-family but also multifamily development. And then, you know, across the growth areas, you'll see commercial, you'll see industrial, you'll see education, and those sorts of uses. Those are all permitted or recommended to be permitted across all of the designation areas, but, you know, context-sensitive, and, you know, you can adjust the character of the development based on the surrounding density and context. So this is where the open house inputs come back. So I'll go back one just for a second. So these are the future community types we developed. We used our data-driven process, right? We used our methodology to walk through and identify these areas, but we also wanted to make sure this captured the community vision, so we came back and overlaid the community open house map inputs as well, all those stickers that got placed on maps. And you can see there's a lot of alignment. We were really pleasantly surprised, and not entirely surprised, but really pleased to see that the community's vision really does align with this methodology. And so we're really confident that this map reflects the community's priorities for growth, but also for preservation as the county moves into the future. So all the maps aside, how does all of this factor into the final plan? We have five chapters in the final plan. Of course, a brief introduction to kind of give context to how the plan can be used and by whom, existing conditions, which Michelle touched on as well, really giving that snapshot of where Stanley is today across a variety of different topics. Then we talk about the community vision and guiding principles, and that's really the summary of our community engagement processes. So synthesizing the survey results, all the in-person conversations we had at the open houses, and distilling from that a clear community vision for the future of Stanley County into that vision statement and our guiding principles. Then, of course, the future land use maps that you just saw. And finally, we've got an entire chapter of policy recommendations and strategies according to those six topics that we reviewed earlier. We actually, I counted today, and we have 33 policy recommendations in the plan, and nearly 140 strategies to support those policy recommendations across the six policy areas. So I'm not even going to try to capture every single one of them tonight. I don't want to keep us here till midnight. But, you know, these all emerged out of steering committee and community engagement, and I want to just give a brief snapshot of what each of those, you know, speaks to in each of the, each of the policy areas. So land use, of course, really focuses on prioritizing smart intentional development that considers surrounding context, density, and infrastructure. And also, that chapter speaks, or that section speaks a little bit to the need for county and municipal collaboration, as well as, you know, county collaboration throughout county departments. Economic development really centers on retaining and attracting economic development opportunities, particularly in key industries like agriculture and manufacturing. And the recommendations in economic development also touch on investing in a really strong educational system to promote economic growth in Stanley County, from supporting families' needs through strong schools and daycare centers, to providing pathways to employment for students in Stanley County. Transportation and mobility, you know, the county has less explicit authority over a lot of the transportation assets in the county. Those are more municipal or state-level. So these recommendations, again, focus pretty heavily on coordination from, you know, the regional level, supporting the Rocky River Rural Planning Organization, to the local level through supporting municipalities on priorities like efficiency, accessibility, and safety. Infrastructure and facilities focuses on collaboration with municipalities, you might be sensing a theme here, to proactively plan for the needs of residents and businesses through infrastructure, through aligning infrastructure development with land use and preservation priorities, while also supporting and not hindering industry growth. So really speaking again to those designation areas that I showed earlier. Community health and safety focuses on improving residents' access to facilities and services and other resources that support healthy and safe lifestyles. And some of those strategies also specifically speak to, you know, improving access to healthcare for more rural areas of the county where we heard there were needs for those sorts of services, and senior access to specific types of medical care so that they can get their needs met as well. And finally, Parks and Recreation and Natural Resources, through our leadership lunches in particular, we heard a really overwhelming need from municipalities for more county support on Parks and Recreation. So a lot of the recommendations speak to that. An important thing to know is that Stanley County is one of only seven counties in the state that does not do any Parks and Recreation planning at the county level. So even if the manifestation of these recommendations isn't a full-fledged department of Parks and Recreation, municipalities do need assistance on things like grant writing, long-term planning, and coordination of Parks and Rec efforts across a regional scale. We also focused in that section on strategies that emphasize promoting and protecting the value of Stanley County's natural resources, whether as opportunities for ecotourism and recreation, contributors to rural character, or drivers to the local economy, or all three. So the plan document itself is in your packet. It's also online. It includes all of those recommendations and strategies for folks who want to dive in and read each one. It's really focused on telling the story of Stanley County through data, through the community vision, and through those actionable strategies for bringing that future to life. The design is really meant to reflect the natural assets that define the county, and the plan document, as well as other updates on the planning process, can be viewed on the plan website. The URL is on the slide, and it also includes an interactive version of all the land use maps and the layers that went into creating it, as well as some other plan materials that we've used throughout the engagement process. And so finally, I will stop talking, and I will welcome up several of our steering committee members. First up, we have Kelly Hart to speak on her observations from the planning process.
Good evening. I'll keep it short and sweet, but being a part of this land use committee has been an enlightening experience for me. I've learned a lot, and I realized that a large number of the people had the same feelings about Stanley County and would like to see this, to see it, what they'd like to see it be in the future. From longtime residents to new residents, which was one thing that really hit home to me, people that have come to our county, that have come here to get out of situations and find a rural living environment, feel the same way as a lot of us that have been here for a long time. They were looking for a place to raise their families and to have a nice rural environment. As we heard from the surveys and community meetings, it became evident that maintaining the county's rural feeling was a top priority of the majority of the residents. The people wanted the most growth and density to be focused in the municipalities, especially where water and sewer are available, while focusing on keeping the rural areas open. Based on the information gathered from across this county, it is my thought that this plan is, the plan before you, is exactly what the people of the county want to see for our future. And I have some people that have signed a document for me supporting that. I would like to give that to y'all if that's possible.
Chairman Jordan, Commissioners, thank you for your time and service. I was sitting back looking at Scott. Scott and I both served on the zoning board, and I'm wondering if the fact that we're both losing our hairs got something to do with our job there. This plan was developed by two individuals that are both focused and driven. Both these girls right here did a wonderful job, and it was a pleasure to serve on a committee with them to do all they have done. So that's why all this work's been done, because they were the focal point of it. I'm here for the fact that what this plan does is it allows us a tool to put in our box to help us direct this development to municipalities, to try to push development to traffic quarters, and we try to put the water supply there. We try to protect the rural investment, the community, the people that have bought a house, built a house, and they want to be in a rural atmosphere, and they wake up the next morning and they find out there's going to be a development, they're in the middle of a development, and they don't want to be. So is this a silver bullet? No, it is not. And has this got an easy button? No, it does not. But what it does, it does add that tool to our box to help us in planning and zoning, to help you guys when it comes here. Because I think the people of Stanley County put you here because of your forward-thinking ability. What our decisions today not only affect the person that's here, but it affects 10, 15 years down the road. And some of those decisions we make may change that, and we need to make sure they're the right thing, because you want to be that forward-thinking person. We want to be that forward-thinking people. And we appreciate you having our backs here. We know that you've got the final say when it comes to zoning. And sometimes we disagree, but you have our backs most of the time, and we try to do a good job to ferret out all the problems before they get to you guys. So I hope you look at this as a positive when you try to go to a vote and approve this thing the way it is, because it is a good plan, and it's going to protect us in the future.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Travis Moorhead, 30157 Keystone Drive, Alamoore. I was a part of the steering committee, and my job every day is kids' conservation, so I have lots of different angles to look at it from a resident and also from a conservation perspective. And I'll tell you that, I'll echo what was mentioned already, that the job done and provided by Central Lina, Michelle and Reagan is exemplary. As a former land use planner, I've been in lots of land use plans across the region, and even in the Triangle and Triad, and it's just a, to receive that much feedback and to apply that as they did was very responsive. And I've been in land use plans before where you've had a lot of folks come out in opposition to a land use plan, and you don't see that here tonight. And I think it's because this group and the steering committee and the folks on the staff, your staff and the consultants, listened to what was being said. I'll mention that there is a large portion of the county that is designated as rural preservation, and that was because of the input that we've received and the input given by steering committee members, and it is exactly what this community needs. When you drive by a rural farm field these days, you might think, well, that's vacant land. It's really not vacant. That's North Carolina's number-one industry. It doesn't have a building that goes there. So that's important for all of us that grew up here. It's important to maintain that rural character, and you see that echoed in the plan. So again, I would echo a lot of the comments already made and don't want to belabor the point, but thank you for your time.
I just want to say thank you for the steering committee members that are here tonight. And with that, we will entertain any questions about the plan or process that you might have for us.
Before I get that far, I do want to take a moment and thank all of you guys on the steering committee, Ms. Reagan, Ms. Vance, Bob and Bailey. I know you guys had this tacked on to your already full schedule. This has been a long, a long thing coming, and I'd like to thank Stanley County, the people that reached out and did the survey, those that helped us share the survey. We saw where that survey was going to be there toward the end. It was, you did not have a lot of responses, and a lot of people came together and got the word spread real quick, and it got a lot more responsive. And the more people chime in, this is going to guide Stanley County for the next two decades. Dwayne and his department, you know, people have no idea how informative it is for people like you, you guys, and us, that now Stanley County has a five, 10, and 20-year water plan. That in itself, you know, that guides so much. There's so many departments that worked hard to come together with the information it takes to make something like this work. I don't know how many man-hours had to be put into just putting this 115 pages together, but I'm sure it's in the thousands. So thank you all for everything that you've done so far. I'm going to let my fellow commissioners ask any questions they have.
Just a couple of comments. First of all, I know a lot of us promoted it to get the word up. I can tell you, I just remember Commissioner Jordan and Commissioner Ahmond were really, really pushing people to go do those surveys. I mean, all the time I heard y'all pushing it to kind of help them, that was a good response. And then, in development, man, how it's changed over the years. And I drove my brothers in town, and we drove behind Morgan Motors, Tim Marburger, in that new development out there. He's like, man, how sad, with all the houses just clumped together right there. And we were just talking and thinking, I wish developers, rather than building developments, I wish they would build neighborhoods. There is a big difference besides building the same house over and over and over again right next to each other, in actual neighborhoods where you have room for trees and everything else inside walks and all that stuff, a little diversity of types of houses put in there and stuff like that. And then also, I got to mention the Parks and Rec thing. We are one of seven counties that don't have a program, and I'd like to, for the Commissioners coming on and the Commissioners staying on, appreciate your support in the past. I think we need to bring that back. We had a grant program where we partnered with the municipalities to help them out, because that's big. People like the open space. People like the open space. And Travis, just thanks for, I read your comments in the minister, and thanks for your speech. I know you do a lot just, uh, outdoors. People like the out, people like the outdoors. The thing, and I know this was not easy to put together, and thank you for all y'all did for that.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, you know, as a, I guess as a planning nerd, it's, you know, I, I really love working with this, and, uh, Ms. Nance and Reagan, Bob, Bailey, uh, you know, it was so exciting. Nobody has a crystal ball, and we look into our land. I mean, it's a 2040 plan. Uh, Bob, I'm not sure when the last one was done, um, but we redid one in Locust that was done in 97, and you can see we redid it in 2014, and how much we've changed since 2014. So like David says, I think this is a great tool that we can put in our box that, you know, we can sort of, you, you can call it managing growth, controlling growth, you know, it's just, I think we all need to work together in making Stanley County a, a great place to live, work, and play, like you said. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we do table this, uh, till we get Commissioner Almond and Commissioner Law on here. I don't want to rush through this. I mean, it's, I, I've read all 118 pages, um, you know, sometimes twice, uh, but it's, it's very important, but I would like to make a motion that we table it to our November 21st meeting to get the other two commissioners here. Again, thank you so much for what, the hard work that you've done. We've been working on this since February, and it is very important to Stanley County in the future. But that's my motion, sir.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Eifert and a second by Commissioner Ashudo. Any further discussion? I'd just like to note again, for those of you that are going to, um, uh, be here, I hope you can come back on the 21st. You don't have to, but I do appreciate the time that you, that you guys came tonight. This is not because there's any, any kind of disagreement with this policy at all. It is a lot to absorb, and we would not be doing our due diligence if we did not, uh, um, get you a little bit here. Yeah, I know. You know, if we did not, uh, take the time to digest this. Any further comments? Uh, we have a first and second, all in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Andy's giving me odd looks. I can still do the public hearing. But, okay. Now, um, we're not going to take action on this tonight. We do have an advertised public hearing for it. Um, Ms. Nance, I'm, I'm, you can take a seat, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to open the floor to the public hearing if anybody would like to speak for or against the proposed Stanley County Land Use Plan. Now is your opportunity. It's only the single most important document that'll guide this county for the next two decades. No pressure. Okay, see none. I'll close the public hearing. Thank you again for all you guys did putting that together. Next item on tonight's agenda is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, the JCPC appointments. That's going to be County Manager Lucas. County Manager, did I do that wrong by doing that motion before the public hearing?
Um, I think it's fine. I mean, there are a lot of different ways to skin a cat. If I was looking at Jenny, I would, you know, that's fine.
But yes, Jenny, did I do that wrong?
I think it's okay.
It's okay.
There we go, okay.
Okay.
I felt the heat coming from that side of the room.
It'll work. Um, so thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, um, uh, there's some appointments that need to be made to that. Uh, there's been some recent resignations and some vacancies. Um, and so before you this evening, um, the JCPC has made some recommendations, uh, for Caitlin McElhaney, John Michael Scott, Oliver Webster, and Jason Fibbs to be appointed to the JCPC. Each potential attendee attended their October JCPC meeting and expressed their youth-related experience and interest in serving as part of the JCPC. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council is a council that meets, um, and there's state grant funding that comes down, um, to deal with, um, you know, those that are sanctioned through the, the Juvenile Justice System. And so those, those programs, each year, there's grants, and they do RFPs for new programs, potentially, and existing programs, um, to provide services. And it's about, um, about 75,000 to $85,000 in our budget that flows through our budget from the state, um, for those different programs. And this local JCPC board talks about those programs, helps to evaluate those programs and whether or not they're, um, producing the intended outcomes, and, and it makes recommendations each year on new programs that go through the RFP process. Um, so you've got those, um, uh, recommendations for appointments in your packet. The council's also record, recommend, requesting removal of Mr. Christopher Perkey, who serves in the juvenile defense attorney role on the council. Um, it's my understanding he has not attended meetings in the past year, um, and is indicated he has a conflict with that meeting time, because they do meet during the business day. All the associated volunteer applications and resumes are in the packet, um, for your consideration, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
County Manager Lucas, do we need to make as, are, are you seeking for us tonight to make as part of the motion, a request to remove the, um, Christopher Perkey?
Yeah, they're asking for him, because he doesn't attend the meetings, and so they'd like to remove him. And I think their, their, what their thought process is, is they're going to try to recruit another defense attorney to, to take that place. They just don't have anybody at this time.
The role of juvenile defense attorney. He's the juvenile defense attorney for that council?
He is. That's what he serves in, the juvenile, juvenile defense attorney, um, category.
Hello, Commissioners?
I make a motion that we remove, uh, Mr. Christopher Perkey in, in the role of juvenile defense attorney.
We have one motion to remove Christopher Perkey, so we can do this as separate actions. Do we have a second on that? Second by Commissioner Eifert. Any further discussion on it? All Commissioners in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion passes six to zero. Further, uh, further act, action from the board?
I'll make a motion that we appoint, um, Jason Fibbs to serve in the position of County Commissioner Appointee.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, a motion by Commissioner Ashudo, a second by Commissioner Barbie to appoint Jason Fibbs as her, as the County Commissioner Appointee on that board. Um, do we need to specify a time, County Manager, or would that, is that term?
I, I don't have the term, the roster. There are, there are, there are terms. Um, there are term limits, within one year. One year. You reappoint these, I think we bring this to you every year, um, and I think we did it back in May, I want to say May or June, when we normally do it.
Understanding that, Commissioner Ashudo, you're, you're making the motion for him to serve one year. I assume that would be ending.
Whatever, whatever.
It'll, it'll end up being not quite a year, because it'll come back up.
Because we're filling, we're filling in positions, correct? These are all filling positions until the end of the term.
Okay, dope. We have a motion and I believe a second. A second by Commissioner Barbie. Any further discussion on that one? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Welcome Mr. Fibbs to the JCPC Board. Any further action?
I'd like to make a motion we, um, appoint Oliver Webster to serve in the position of a person.
Person under age of 21 or a member of the public.
Member of the public representing the interest of families of at-risk juveniles.
In the interest of time, are you going to make the motion that we do Caitlin McElhaney for the substance abuse profession?
I think we got to the point where most of these appointees, we've been doing one at a time, unless you want to do a group, I don't mind doing that.
You can do them as a group.
That's the last two, so we could.
We got two more. I'd like to also make a motion we appoint Caitlin McElhaney to the substance, position of substance abuse professional, and John Michael Scott to serve in the position of member of the faith community.
Ms. Howard, you have his titles all right? All right, so we have a motion from Commissioner Ashudo for those three candidates, uh, Caitlin McElhaney, John Michael Scott, and Oliver Webster in their aforementioned capacities. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Eifert. Any further discussion on that one? All Commissioners in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. You guys are here tonight, thank you for your willingness to serve. Mitch, Jason, I see you here. Thank you for offering to serve. That's it on that agenda item. Last item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. You've all had a chance to read that. Chair, would like to seek a motion to approve it as presented.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve that as presented by Commissioner Ashudo.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Eifert. All in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Board comments, announcements, and committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? There are two. All right. Um, I'm going to start down here at the right with Commissioner Fur. Yeah, not a thing. All right. That's what you get for putting a hell on the spot. Wait a minute, didn't you get married this last meeting? Congratulations. It's even legal. You know, we had, did you know how to judge text me and ask if it was legal? Commissioner Ashudo.
Yeah, real quick, exciting news from the cross-country. This, this year, the, the, I saw the run in the store, then the count, the, the cross-country people had their best run, their best year ever in a lot of years since I'm gone. But anyway, great news out there, starting on the west side. You had, um, Carson Wells, he was an all-state runner from West Stanley. He broke 17 minutes in the state finale, and that's pretty fast, 16:54. And he came in seventh in the state to get all-state honors. He was, um, and the West Stanley boys came in 10th. Holly Hatch came in eighth in the state for the girls, so she's an all-state runner from West Stanley, and the West Stanley girls came in fourth place. Top four is always good. They have 16 teams usually in each, each division, so top four is wonderful. Um, real quick shout-out to Emberly, Polly Brown. She runs for North Carolina Science and Math, but the first two years, she ran for Greystone, and she's up there now. She was one of the, she was on the winning state championship team for North Carolina, um, North Carolina Science and Math team, so she's the state champion. I can tell you, of all the kids for all the years, she's one, probably one of the top five or six most polite kids, and they're all polite, that would come up and thank me for coming out and helping picking up the cones, really, really nice girl. The big news is that Sal Stanley won the state championship in cross-country. That's the first time since Greystone won it a long time ago, and I can tell you, I'm going to spend a little time on this, because this was not a one-year deal. This was like a six-year process. Mike Curley started coaching those kids in middle school when they were on the middle school team, and he brought them up over the years, and they came in, they, um, won the state championship, and they were, um, it was a three-way tie for first place. They, the top three teams, them, Cherokee, and Christ the King, all had 77 points. And in cross-country, you score the top five, but whatever team has the fastest sixth runner, they win. So they had the fastest sixth runner with Eli Thompson coming in 46th place compared to, um, one of the other teams, 48th place. So it's a team sport, and they took the, took home the state championship. And quick shout-out to Joshua Honeycutt, he came in fifth in the state to make all-state, and Ranfree Garcia and Davis Wright, they came in 12th and 13th, just outside of the, of becoming all-state runners, but they do come home with the state championship. And I can tell you what, Coach Curley, he had those kids together. He'd come out when I had my moonlight, drive a movie run, they'd run the 5K, and the team would always come out there and bond together at the drive-in afterwards, and that's just been an incredible journey, journey for them. And then, um, real quick shout-out to Georgia Sangster from, she's a sophomore from Greystone. Then the Greystone girls came in 7th place. They were three points away from coming in 5th, and Georgia was 11th place. She was two seconds off of being an all-state runner, so her being a sophomore, I'm sure she'll be back, but, but shout-out to those cross-country runners this year. They just did a phenomenal job at the state meet this weekend, and to all the coaches.
Congratulations to them, and thank you, Commissioner Ashudo. Commissioner Barbie?
Well, add to Peters. Yes, congratulations to all those, I could never name them all off, but congratulations to you guys.
Just one quick reminder that the Veterans Day Parade will be this Friday at 11 o'clock in Oakboro. I would love to see you come out and support that. And our thoughts and prayers go out to Dr. J.C. Boone. Um, I don't know, a lot of you may know J.C. He served on the Senior Services Board forever in Stanley County, and he's done a lot in Stanley County, so our thoughts and prayers are with his family. He passed away, I believe, yesterday.
Thank you, Commissioner Eifert, and he may have dropped off since I forgot to come back to him first, but Commissioner Almond, you still there?
Yes, sir. Uh, just want to remind everybody election day is tomorrow, and congratulate Lane on his knuckles, and, uh, thank Reverend Commissioner Tommy Jordan for proceeding over the service.
Thank you for throwing that in there. Where did Pam go? She's hiding, yeah, she's hiding that. Lane, congratulations, Pam, we're so sorry. Commissioner Fur, thank you for allowing me and Commissioner Eifert to be part of that. That was a, a, a pretty great thing. I, I cannot believe that wonderful lady married you, but, um, no, I have enjoyed my time here, sir, with you. You're a great man to work with. I don't have any updates from my boards tonight. Um, I'm going to, I'm going to echo what Commissioner Almond said. Um, you know, it is really important to get out there and vote, and I asked a guy today if he voted, and he said, no. I said, so you, you go, going tomorrow, right? And he said, I'm not really into politics, I haven't really, I'm not sure who to vote for. Wow. So, um, please get out there and vote if you haven't done so already. I don't have anything else. Uh, thank you all for, for coming tonight. I will seek a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Eifert, second by Commissioner Barbie, all in favor? Any opposed? Hush. We are adjourned.